Welcome everyone to the December 11th, 2024 Business Meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Skookel Township. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
In the United States of America, consider your government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call. We have John Callahan, Danielle Juwenn, Martha Majewski, Bob Cooney and myself, Mark Donovan for the board, Lori Getz and Valentina Mitterer from our township staff, manager and assistant manager. Bill Brennan is our solicitor for one more night.
One night only.
Yeah. And Paul Bettinger is our engineer. We had an exec session prior to the meeting. Tonight, this is to discuss property acquisition, litigation and personnel. And did we decide on having one after the meeting or are we?
You can answer any questions.
Okay, cool. Great. Well, we will start by swearing in our new fire police officer. James, if you would like to come up and write to the mic here, I'm going to hand you this oath of office. You're going to read it right into the mic.
Thank you very much.
Will, yeah, we'll sign, yeah, once you've read it.
Hello.
Hi there.
My apologies, first time doing this. Do I gotta raise my hand or anything?
Raise your right hand and please read the words right on the page in front of you.
I, James Kukler, do solemnly swear that I will uphold and support the Constitution and bylaws of Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company, Station 68, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the United States of America. I will discharge the duties of fire police officer in Skookel Township, Chester County with fidelity so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for serving our community.
Great. Thank you, James.
Thank you, James. Thanks for taking the time to come out and visit us tonight.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
I love it.
Appreciate it. Yes, right on, man. It's good.
I like it. I think that's a new precedent there. I love it.
You too. Alright.
We expect that from everybody now?
Yeah.
Take note, yes.
Make sure you walk backwards, you know?
Yeah. Alright, well, we have a presentation from Alloy Five tonight about the municipal complex renovation. I will hand it right over to our presenter for the evening.
As I'm reading from... Does everybody have a presentation booklet? Alright, so I'm James with Alloy Five. I've been here a few times now, so hello everyone again. It's been a little bit, but we just wanted to provide an update about the municipal complex renovation. Nick, if you want to. So, this project got approved to move into an actual project in February, so we had a little bit of back and forth with schematic design, which was the first phase. So we had a few, probably too many meetings with everyone, just to make sure everyone in all the departments were happy. We we have just entered design development, which is where we, you know, now that we have the layouts for all the departments, we're moving into looking at each space and sort of zooming in a little bit to understand the kind of 50-foot level stuff rather than being up high. So that's where we're at right now. Go ahead to the next slide. So Paul and his team graciously got us an updated site plan. So you can see here, pretty colors of your master site plan of this township. So these are all the pieces that you've seen before. Obviously, the building that we're in today, right now, is built keyed A. B is the Roads and Public Works Department, and C is the Historic Building. You're going to hear some terminology, the first being base bid. So base bid is what you've seen before and what you've approved to this point. That's sort of what we're striving to price when this project comes to be complete. So if you switch to the next slide, Nick, this is demolition plan. So you could see the red is a lot of demolition on the lower level to make way for an addition and a full renovation. The current lower level plan, we worked diligently with Lori and the Police Department. I want to thank everyone for having very productive meetings on that. So you could see the addition in the back right of the, of the building enhances sort of the things that were, we've identified as, as missing. Really worked through the sequence of entry from both the public portion and the rear entries. So the way that the employees, Police Department is entering from the back. The upper level, same thing. You're seeing a lot of, a good amount of red because it's a good amount of demolition on this level. On the left, you see the room that we're in currently. So in the base bid portion, we are proposing to sort of alter the way that this room operates to create a little bit more of an efficient layout. So it sort of rotates the dais in place. We're kind of pushing out to the area behind us. So we're adding square footage to this room. We've created a sort of private corridor to exit from the dais to the caucus room in the case of all of you having to sort of exit and have a caucus in private. An enhanced closet in the bottom left corner of that room. And then, as you move to the lobby and admin space, pretty typical, you're, you've probably seen this layout. So it's a few offices, a break room, kind of mechanical and touchdown workspace for people when they want to come out of their offices. We're kind of halfway, maybe going into three quarters, but this is an exterior view of what this looks like currently. So this would be the view looking at the police entry. You could see the addition sort of punching out into where the, the generator is currently. The lower level, the Police Department, not many windows. So we're sort of working to, to, you know, make the outside of the building pop a little bit while maintaining that privacy that the Police Department requires. We're also showing kind of a secure as part of the master planning. We're trying to separate the police squad cars and the police secure area behind a fence. So we're proposing to move the public parking away and out of that, so you can avoid what's currently happening where the police and the public parking is all in one area. This is the Roads Department. This changed a little bit. We had previously shown an addition off of one of the ends of the building. After the meetings, we met with the Roads Master, and we're proposing a pre-engineered structure just for additional storage and vehicular kind of safekeeping. So there's three garage bays in the pre-engineered structure. There's a little bit of rework in the existing scenario. So one of the goals was to make a break room or like an open office for the Roads Department to sort of have somewhere to go, and then actually moving the Roads Master office into the Roads Department building. So you could see that called out there also. One, so as we were moving through this process and from the very get-go of this project, the geometry of this particular room has been of interest to myself. So at one point, you know, after hearing some of the comments about this room, I had just said to, you know, myself and my team internally, what, what do we think it would look like if we tried to square off this room either in some, some way, shape or form, maybe halfway? So that's what we're calling a bid alternate, which would mean if you wanted us to explore this, we would design this, and then at the end of the bidding process, you would be able to review just this piece as kind of like an à la carte pricing item. So this is sort of just a sketch we did internally about what this could look like. So we would square off kind of the entry portion, which is this way. You could see it sort of keyed in red.
And this would not affect the downstairs at all?
Well, at first, we thought maybe we could give space to the downstairs too. It proves to be a little problematic because that's foundation wall down there. So it wouldn't be as easy to sort of knock through and just have open space added to the lower level. You'd have to be really intentional about where you punch through, if that makes sense.
But it's not impossible.
It's not impossible.
We've talked about this. We don't know, we didn't want to get too far into looking into this yet.
Yeah.
Until the board considered it, because there will be an additional cost to do that exploration. We might be able to gain additional space downstairs as well, but
Yeah.
we, we don't quite know yet.
But I guess my question is, this drawing is just for up here? It doesn't go down?
Correct. For the one you're looking at right now. Yep.
Right, right.
So you're moving the caucus room over to be back here.
Yep.
Instead of across the hall.
Correct.
And then adding that space back out here.
Yes. There would be, the caucus room would move out of the admin, I guess proper, over to this side. Free up some space for storage, proper storage over here. Rooms just sort of want to be square in, in our nature with light, with, not always, but with furniture layouts, it seems to be maximized seating. So we did, you know, have a little more seating included in this version. This is a little...
I'm sorry, I was noting when, just the one that, there's no page numbers. The, the is there? Are there page numbers? Oh, there's staple. There's a staple in it. Okay, nine. So the one that is on page nine, slide nine, I mean, 58 seats. I was counting before. I mean, there's like 40-something right now. So 58 is not a huge improvement in the number of seating, if that's what we think we could get.
Yep.
With just changing the orientation and pushing that wall out a little bit.
Yeah.
So, and it's hot or cold for these meetings. Either we're, we're alone and nobody cares about us, or there's a lot of people here and very interested in what we're doing that night. So I guess my, my concern is spending a lot of money on design where the public's not going to see a benefit.
Correct.
My primary concern is the public has to see a benefit for this, for this project.
Yeah, so moving to the pros and cons slide, Nick, I think we sort of start to talk about some of that. So this is just sort of captivating, you know, we wanted to be honest on both sides. Gain about 400 square foot of space on this side. The caucus shifts over here. There's a dedicated conference room for the admin department. I think we gained about 30. I think there was 80-some seats in that layout, so that would be a plus 30 from what you're seeing now. The dais layout, more efficiently populated. The new walls, we can more efficiently design to the current building code, so we don't have to have glass on all the walls. You could insulate them. I know a concern in the past was security. So about 50% of the walls could be kind of heightened and not dedicated window walls. So I think the energy efficiency and the security fact of that would be a pro. The cons is this kind of structure that we're in right now, this glue lamb arch is a pretty complex structure, so this would have to stay. It can't be modified. Like I said before about the foundation below us, if, you know, there would be an exploration on if that would make sense to include that into the lower level. So it's expensive to sort of modify that foundation. So we would have to be really intentional on kind of doorways and openings, if that is the case. The structural design fee, because it's so complex, there would be an additional charge there. And then it's a higher cost than what the previous probable cost we gave to you was.
So the, on slide 13, I see these dark gray marks. These are, these are these posts that have to stay.
They have to stay.
Just curious, you said it's going to be very expensive to try to change this building. Have you priced out the... What if you demolished this building and rebuilt it? I mean, not this building, but this part of it. Assuming that none of us have any love for the very complex arches and are just looking pragmatically at cost.
I think that wouldn't be too far of a delta from what you're going to have, you know, what's going to happen, just because of the complex roof shape that this creates and all of the additional sort of overframing that's on the outside, and the way that would tie into the new roof. It would, I mean, there would be a considerable difference, but on, you know, once you get to that point, it's like kind of, should we explore just this, this part of the building?
I'm just imagining people trying to sit with these posts in front of them. And some of the discussions that we've been having too, there are many. We, we want to see the additional space be gained in this room for all of the reasons that, that you said. There's, that's almost the verbatim conversation that, that we had about this, is we need to be able to accommodate more public or just not able to gain. People see.
Yeah.
And this is a big part of the issue, not only for the capacity and exactly what you're saying with the obstructions there, but we've talked about the acoustics and the challenges it's going to pose for putting improved technology in here, because we've been talking about projectors and screens. I'm like, well, where do you?
Well, you can retrofit it around the post.
Right. So we, we have not explored that, but if the board would like to see us explore just demoing this.
Yeah.
I know I have.
The entirety of this.
I have no love for this. I love architecture, but I don't really love this.
Nice part about a bid alternate or an alternate is that, you know, it's, it's a commit, like you commit to it, but at the end, you know, when you see everything itemized, you could sort of say, oh no, like that's too much, or, and then you just stick with the, the base plan of what was approved. So clients usually like alternates, because at the end, when you get the numbers back, you can make an informed decision on. So this brings, this was a probable cost slide that we had provided previously. And the big thing I wanted to highlight here is, for us, this would probably, architecturally, we structured our design fee to have sort of three parts. The admin building, which is what we're in now, police, roads department and historic building. We had talked about sort of sliding that around, so there will be additional design time for, for us to sort of document the alternate. But I think if the historic portion of it was maybe held off, that wouldn't necessarily change our fee. Now, structural, there was no structural design for the historic building, so they would probably have, they would most definitely have some kind of additional fee for designing that alternate, but for ourselves and mechanical, electrical, plumbing, we would sort of shift our allotted design time to the alternate in lieu of the historic building.
So, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at this on the fly a little bit. The, when we originally talked about the historic building.
Yeah.
Part of the value of, of redoing that was that we could open that up to the public and have a public meeting space. So that's still what your, your intent is with that, with that building?
Yeah, if that was to, to remain, yes.
The concept there, as we were going through the design and talking about this, with the site work, we, we've kind of determined it's going to be a little bit more challenging to make that building suitable for that purpose. Because where we're putting the Road Department addition is going to make the parking challenging there. So in order to accommodate opening that up to the public, I'm not so, we're not certain if we can, if we can accomplish that in the fashion that we thought we might be able to accomplish it based on, with the additional work that we've done with the survey and all of it, now that we have concrete information to work off of. So the thought process then was, okay, well, if we can get this room to be able to accommodate more people, then this could become the space, the flex space that we can open more to the public and allow use if we're able to increase the security and increase the technology and all of that, that we could open it up. You can see how much more secure the areas will be from the ad, it would be much easier to keep it separate from the secure admin space than it is now. So, and we had discussed before, I mean, the historic building is going to have significant challenges in it to get it to a place where it can accommodate people, and, and the capacity in it really is not very much. So. So for example, like now when some of our public officials like Schusterman or, I don't know if Houlihan would ever do this, but want to meet with constituents in our township, we could make this room available for that purpose, and it wouldn't interfere with your, your operations in this new. Correct. Okay. Yeah.
Little town hall space.
Little town, yeah.
So what would your vision of the historical building be used for if we're going to use this as that more public space?
Yeah. I would, I would imagine getting, getting the Road Master's office out of there. Fixing it up cosmetically to whatever needs to be on the inside. It's not that bad. And continuing to use it for off-site storage, for materials that we're not prepared to get rid of.
Okay, okay. That's, that's what I thought you were going to say.
Yeah.
When you, I guess, take the public out of entering into that space, you sort of lose the ADA and all the, the things that come with that. So you know, making that a, a public space would require bringing a lot of things up to code, not only ADA, but electrically, plumbing, HVAC. So it's an option.
And that had not been, we hadn't even gotten that far in assuming that in the cost estimate of the feasibility study.
Correct.
We didn't go that far into analyzing what it would take
Yeah.
to bring it into ADA compliance for public use.
So you don't need it to be ADA compliant for staff and storage?
There will be no, no. There will be no, right?
It's, it's long-term storage, so it wouldn't necessarily need to be because it's an existing building and...
It's also historic, so there are different.
It's not used, right. It's not used.
There would be no need for us, if we're not making, if we're not renovating it to turn it into something else, there would be no need for us to retrofit it at this point.
Okay.
Based on its current use.
Okay.
Yeah, cosmetics sort of falls into a level of alteration that doesn't require you to bring, as long as you stick under what it's currently being used as.
And when we're talking about, you know, fixing it up, we're talking paint, fix the, fix the heat in it, like that sort of thing.
Okay, so a big part of this is grants, and we know that we've been working with Lori and the team on grants, so just wanted to highlight like kind of how we're used to seeing grants from our perspective. So the projects that we work with, the biggest one is RCAP, RACP. And the biggest phrase I could, you know, summarize that with is it's sort of gap financing. So you, as Skookel Township, would sort of engage your local or your state representative to sort of advocate for you, once you have a probable cost on this project, which you do. And you sort of have an idea of how much you can bring to the table. So I'm just going to use raw numbers. Say the project costs $100, and Skookel Township has $70. The state would usually step in, that RACP grant would say, okay, we're going to grant that $30 gap funding. So it's really kind of important to have that initial sit-down with your state representatives. Now, you already have a line item, which is part of a, kind of a two-part process. So there is a line item in the sort of state budget for this project. The language around it is sort of geared towards sustainability. So your, your rep would sort of let you know if that was flexible. The goals of this project not necessarily are sustainability at this point, but maybe there, there's parts of it that are. So I think the conversation sort of starts with, do you want to try to get another line item for this project? Because the maximum, I think, is what you were granted in the past, was about 1.2 million. So the key takeaways are kind of, I think we have to start thinking about when, you know, if this project get numbers back in June of '25, is this a 2025 project, or is it a 2026 project? So there's a bunch of other ones that we're used to working with. There's a USDA agriculture one, and then there's a LSA land share count. Those are kind of the three most common ones that we work with, and a lot of that is us assisting with anything the township needs in terms of graphics or narratives or helping you. Sometimes they come back and ask for information that we can work with you on. So it leads us into schedule. Currently, we are projecting the current phase to end in middle of January. And then we have eight weeks of, eight, I'm sorry, nine weeks of construction documentation, where our meetings will sort of table a little bit. At that point, in theory, we should just be documenting what the kind of construction process will be. We're sort of providing the instructions for someone to give a number on. And after that, there's usually a five to six week bid time, where potential bidders are getting all their numbers in a line. So we're projecting roughly to get numbers back spring, May, end of April, May of this year. So that's why, as we move forward, we sort of have to start thinking, if this does become a 2026 project, then those numbers that we would have gotten back in like June or, I'm sorry, May of 2025, may change in 2026.
Can I go back a little bit? I'm sorry. I know I'm bouncing all over the place. You didn't mention, I don't think we spoke much about the master site plan.
Okay.
I just, I did notice, we've talked in the past about the fact that our, our Public Works area is very disjointed from the rest of the complex, and there's no, other than going back out onto the road, there's no way to get to it. I noticed that you didn't connect the two.
and there's no, other than going back out onto the road, there's no way to get to it. I noticed that you didn't connect the two. Has there, was there any discussion about that?
We are working with Paul and his group on sort of those master site plan elements, so I think we did have a sidewalk connecting.
We did, yeah, so that's part of, so T and M will end up handling the site, site work and land development aspect of it, so that's not all shown here in a final, final form yet. But yes, that is, that remains on our list, and we were showing, we were going back and forth as to whether or not it could be an actual road, or if it should just be a sidewalk, depending on how much coverage we have.
And then the other question I had, and again, this might be more site work, but one of the concerns that has been expressed in the past is, we have public space that's open space and could in theory be used by people, and it's limited in a little bit because it's right behind our police station. And we want to make sure that our police, you know, are not being overly exposed, you know, by public access behind the police station. Is that more of a, a site work, T and M discussion? I just don't see how that's been addressed here in this proposal.
It's probably not shown on that, but in the rendering, we sort of are, at this point, showing some kind of secure site enclosure just for that police area in the back. So, we're working through what that actually is, if it's a, some kind of fence or a wall, but yes, that has definitely been on everyone's mind, that, that security of the police department and their comings and goings.
Also showing additional parking spaces, it's a little hard to tell, but the, the island will be removed so that we can create additional parking in this lot that can be used for the field out back. And there will also then be separate public parking spaces out back that are secured and cordoned off from the secure police area.
Okay, so that people aren't walking around looking at the license plate for our officers. And, and I'm sure you've been speaking with our police department about what they would like to see?
And those parking spaces don't interfere with the conservation easement? On the property?
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of encumbrance into the conservation easement, so one of the things that we're going to do is look to see if we can organize with the county, cause that's where I think the lands were originally done. Get from Peter to Pay Paul type of effect, like if we're taking a little bit here, can we give a little bit back over to that situation? And it was our, it was our feeling that since this is a, you know, a local government municipality, they would be very understanding of this as opposed to a developer or somebody else that was trying to venture into an existing conservation easement.
One can hope that, so.
We can jump back to this, we just have, you know, these discussions at the end. This is just a screenshot of sort of where, what we're doing now in our, our weekly meetings. Moving into sort of the interior design, like I said, we're looking at, you know, sort of the map of spaces that we made in our schematic design, and we're zooming in, so this would be the police kind of squad room. We're starting to show kind of from plan view to three D view, not everything is going to be white. This is just kind of a starting palette, and as we move through these meetings, these will be populated with not only finishes, but the kind of questions that we're walking through right now. What types of lighting, what types of storage, what types of seating, what makes sense for presentations for the police? How many chairs, how many desks, kind of like phone data comment questions. So that's sort of the level of things that we're discussing at a design development level. Upstairs, we're sort of highlighting a typical office, talking about, and again, things like lighting, storage, presentations, if you're having presentations within the office, pin-up space, sort of the personal storage at each desk. And then, you know, a small, like kind of small meeting space. This would be what we're calling a touchdown space, so a space for when people come out of their office. It's essentially kind of like a storage counter, so it's, you know, base cabinets with all types of storage for plans, other, other non-planned storage, but it's kind of like a huddling space. And again, things like presentation space, if there is sort of a huddle out there, is there a need for a TV to look at presentations or even just a marker board? Yeah, so that's sort of the screenshot of what we're zooming in to do at this stage. So just sort of ending, this is the existing plan, and this is where we're going. So it's where we, same thing for the admin department, this is what it's like, admin in the meeting room, this is what it is today, and this is where we're going. So that sort of concludes the update. Anything further on any, any part of that?
Since we are now talking about all of the impediments in making this room bigger, have you thought of, and I'm sure there will be a lot of costs associated, we were to demolish this room, have you thought of any alternative or bid alternative where, or design alternative where this room stays, it's just not used as the public meeting room, and some other portion of the building is pushed out? Maybe there's been discussions on that, maybe there's a good reason why we couldn't think of that.
So, moving the function of this room elsewhere, so this would be repopulated as another program?
Another public meeting room, another, another, something else.
I think because of the way the site, like, limitations are, we at one point had discussions about maybe pushing out in the front here. But with the, you know, the parking and kind of the way that the, the power comes in, I think that's over there. Also from the street, it didn't necessarily, we couldn't gain a lot of square footage. And then, kind of going backwards from where the addition is that we have now, like sort of going further, would I think alter the way that the police was parking, there were discussions about sort of enclosing, making it one big kind of space back there, they currently have a kind of protected overhang in the back there. It just didn't seem feasible to alter that circulation, so I think where we have the addition, the main addition currently, even, you know, we have to relocate the generator, which is there currently, so there kind of was problems, not problems, but things that we had to address at each, each way we, each way we go.
So at this point, we don't really, we don't need a vote, but if we at least have some sort of consensus so that James knows where to proceed at this point, if we like, if the board likes the concept of the bid alternate, we can move forward with that, and then we can get a formal cost proposal for what that, we haven't gone far enough into it to even identify exactly how much that's going to cost, so then we can come back and have the board vote on the actual cost addition, the additional proposal for the cost for the bid alternate. And we can also now explore knocking this whole room down, adding more red lines.
I think the structural engineer would be happier with me if we did that.
I get that same sense, yes, the discussions that we have had about this room.
That might, that might simplify all of them. So I'd be interested in seeing the bid alts for both expanding this and just knocking it the F down.
Two, we could do two bid alternates.
Two bid alternates?
So one would be for the, well, do.
Expanding this room, another would be.
I mean, we could just take up for the, knock it down.
I, I'm gonna say, don't waste your money on trying to retrofit this. If, if we're going to expand it, and it makes, and it makes more sense to just knock it down and expand it.
Yeah, do it once, do it right.
I'm inclined to do that, I just, I guess the build, bid alternate would tell us how much more money that's gonna cost. So how much is the cost of just doing, doing a bid, the bid alternate?
From a, like a documentation. It would be covered from, like I said, we would sort of architecturally slide what we allocated towards the historical building. Towards this, like I said, structural, because they didn't have any structural work at the historic building, they, they will have a change in their, you know, an additional fee. So that, that's really, am I missing anything?
And we don't, we don't know exactly what that.
Well, I think we're sort of saying, is it, does it make sense to have two or one?
Well, I guess, I mean, I guess I don't know that I know right now whether it makes sense to have two or one, because you could come back and say, you know, demolishing this and making it bigger is a million dollars versus retrofitting is five hundred thousand. And then maybe for five hundred thousand, we could deal with the, the posts in the middle of the room.
Can we get a cost estimate from structural? And that way we can compare and, and be able to see, okay, well, if it's, if it's gonna cost similar or.
Yeah, we can have, can have structural weigh-in, definitely. They did help with the last cost. There's sort of a, you know, formula and a range, and the, the range of construction depends on the complexity of it, so. He sort of weighed in on, wasn't the hardest thing to do, but it wasn't the easiest, I think he rated it like a six out of ten.
Okay, sure. I'll take it. So we'll, we'll come back with, we'll work on getting that proposal and that estimate together, and we'll come back with that, so you can see sort of more as, as concrete of numbers, that they're not gonna, it's not gonna be an estimate. And we can bring that back for you to consider, and then we can decide from there, do you want one or two bid alternates? Of course, we want, we want to do what makes the most sense.
You won't, until, until like the final numbers come back, you won't really, you know, that's the beauty of a bid alternate, you could say, okay, the the main plan that we had already approved with no really additions up here, costs X, and then bid alternate one is X plus what, and bid alternate two, I guess, is what we're talking about now, X plus, X plus three.
Well, I suppose then part of the question, my, because what I'm, it sounds, I mean, we've known the priority here is expanding, of course, all of the areas, but this meeting room is a big priority, so. Do you want it as a bid alternate?
I don't know why we'd be investing all of this if we weren't gonna get better functional space out of this room.
We looked at it as an alternate because what the board authorized did not, the board authorized us to do plans for the expansion that was shown, so that's the reason that I didn't authorize them to design the plans with the bigger meeting room, because we didn't have the authorization to do that. So that's why it's being shown as a bid alternate, because that's what they could produce for us without it being hugely costly for us to look at. But if you'd rather, if they'd rather just say, we want this meeting room to be bigger, then it doesn't have to be an alternate at all, my.
You could push it into the base bid and.
That would be my opinion, I mean, Lieutenant McCarthy knows, every time we have a swearing-in ceremony for a police officer, we're like shoulder to shoulder. I mean, and so I can't see investing all this money and not getting more functionality of this room. Since this is what the public sees.
Yeah, so then perhaps, well, perhaps then the answer that we need is what is the cost difference to knock, we want to, the board wants to expand this room, they want that included as the base bid. Do we knock it, what's the differential to knocking it down or keeping this dome?
What do other people think? That's what Danielle thinks.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I agree with that.
That's fine.
We don't have any easy projects here. We aim for the, aim for the stars.
Would you be able to provide the dimensions at some point of the expansion if you square it off? Mainly because when I'm looking at the master plan, that will chew into a lot of that sidewalk area, and there'll be a proximity to the, the travel path. I'll need a good idea to look at what's gonna be a potential impact of the parking.
Yep.
Thank you.
That makes sense, do you think that we have enough to?
We can work towards kind of getting that, some, some further numbers to help this decision.
Great.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, actually, before you go, has the chief and lieutenant looked at this layout for the police department?
Yes.
Many times.
Many times.
We've had many meetings.
Okay, so, you're okay with what you've seen tonight?
Yes, yeah, we discussed a lot of changes made, I think the only concern that I would raise, I don't even know if this is possible, because of all the interviews, past hair funds, I imagine all the floor plans and all the presentations in hand have to be presented to the public. My only concern would be that the blueprints for the future police department are made publicly available.
They're not, they will not be, and in fact.
Brian, it's the same thing with all the, the new schools, they're not made public either.
And utility, public utilities, schools, all of the things, yeah.
We've been included every step of the way.
Do we have any other comments on this or?
So you have what you need to move forward from us?
Correct.
Okay.
Great.
Fantastic.
And as always, I'm ready to move in tomorrow, so, you know, I'm, I'm excited.
Are you sure you don't want to move the admin department over here?
I mean, we give a lot of really cool windows.
Yeah, lots of cool windows.
It is cold over here, though.
Yeah, it is. All right, well, then, thank you very much for the presentation, we'll talk to you soon. And we'll move right on with our regular business meeting. For the consent and agenda, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular business meeting, and November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, public hearing, including all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of, month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, do I have a second? Thank you, Bob. Any questions, anybody? Comments? No? All in favor? For the treasures report, I get to talk a lot. I'll make a motion to consider acceptance of the treasures report for the period ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the amended treasures reports as listed in the agenda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bob. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, I will start with, so for period ending November thirtieth, we have a general fund balance of just over six point three million. We're right about where I would expect us to be at this time of the year. We are still running a surplus at this point, we have expended about eighty percent of our expenditures and realized over a hundred percent of our revenue for the year. This will continue to go down, we have a lot of, a lot of large expenditures that happen at the end of the year. But you'll see on the agenda tonight, we will pass the resolution to give me the authority to make unbudgeted transfers of surplus at the end of the year, I just don't know exactly yet what those numbers will be, it will depend, again, on, on where everything ends after we make our, our final bill payments for the year. As for the amended treasures reports, back in June, there was an issue with the June treasures report that cascaded in the accounting software and carried through the next, every month until this month, so we're just correcting that, cleaning it up before the end of the year.
All right, thank you, any further discussion, questions? Public, all in favor? I'll make a motion, we approve disbursements dated eleventh, uh, eleventh December, twenty twenty-four, do I have a second? Thanks.
All of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Great. Any questions? All in favor? All right, subdivision and land development, we have two seventy-five campwood, preliminary final land development application, corrective lot line consolidation. All right, subdivision and land development. Uh, we have two seventy-five campwood preliminary final land development application, corrective lot line consolidation plan. Uh, this consolidates properties and property lines that were drawn incorrectly on the plans and the planning commissions reviewed and recommends approval of the waivers. Do we have an applicant?
My table will be over my red and black, so I'm in the process of moving and my ties are packed, so sorry.
That's all right. We're in the right place.
Yeah, that's, that's about it. The original, thank you. The, the original engineer, they screwed up the plan. This is correcting the plan. Um, nothing's changing at the, at the location. No, no, there's no, there's no, uh, no change of any kind. This is simply just correcting what was done. They, they did it through a subdivision plan the last time, so they had to re-correct it through a subdivision plan. They couldn't just do a corrective deed. Yep.
Yeah.
So, and that's it. Thank you, though.
All right, thanks.
Did you catch his name? We have that.
Okay, he went, awesome. He went too fast for me, but I figured she had it covered.
All right, so they are seeking preliminary final approval of the subdivision plan here. Uh, I'll make a motion, we, uh, approve preliminary subdivision, preliminary final, uh, for this subdivision application for a lot line consolidation plan. Do I have a second? Thank you. All, uh, any comments, questions, concerns from anyone, including the public? All in favor? Hi, thank you. Nice and simple, thank you. Okay, for the next one, we have a zoning hearing board application concerning two ten Jug Hollow Road. The applicant seeking relief from, um, for accessory structures greater than a hundred fifty feet, that, a hundred fifty square feet that must meet district regulations, including uh, the total maximum footprint of seven hundred and fifty square feet. We have an applicant for that one. Feel free to come up to the mic, state your name and address or.
Please don't.
Curtsy, um, Michael English, uh, two ten Jug Hollow Road.
Do you, um, do you wanna give the board just a brief summary of what you're looking to do?
Sure, um, we moved in twelve-ish years ago. Um, we had two sheds on the property, looking to remove the sheds and put a permanent accessory structure for personal storage and workshop. The garages back then were not built at a height that I can work in comfortably, so, um, just storage and, uh, and hobby, uh, location. The, the, the setback request is just due to the, pretty much the only flat area on the property. Um, as you're familiar, that area is, uh, very hilly, so, um, I don't have a lot of options. Um, we actually found during a preliminary survey or a, a survey, the one shed on our property was actually five feet over the property line to begin with, so this would actually be correcting that because we would be removing the shed and then extending the setbacks slightly. Um, we are asking for a five-foot step setback instead of fifty, just again, due to the site plan, um, and the location without having to do extensive excavation or tree work, uh, tree removal. Um, and then the request for the size variance, um, is between, is over the seven hundred and fifty, but under the over a thousand for, um, water purposes or water runoff purposes. So that's the, uh, that's the goal of the structure.
So this is gonna solve an existing encroachment problem?
Yes, it will. Uh, the, like I said, the, the shed currently is sitting over the property line, uh, by roughly five or so feet.
That's gonna be removed?
That'll be completely removed and they'll be, uh, well, asking for at least, you know, you know, five feet of setback. And the way the property line works is the front corner of the building would be the five feet, the back corner of the building would actually be roughly twenty-five feet. The, the property line veers off almost right where we wanna put the structure.
Is the neighbor okay with it?
Yes. So.
Do you happen to have anything in writing?
Um, I do have, I, I am waiting for their signed affidavit. Um, I have talked to them verbally. They are completely okay with it. It, his, his line to me was, in the nine years I've lived here, I've walked back there once. Um, it's in a, it's in a portion of property that's virtually unusable for them. Um, there's no access, there's no flat land, there's no open space, or it's all trees. Um, when I say open space, no, no lawn. Um, so he said he was fine with it. I've been trying to catch him to sign the paper and I've also asked him, um, if he'd be willing to attend the hearing if it moves to that, um, but his initial verbal reaction was no problem. Um, and then the, uh, a budding neighbor on the backside of the property has signed an affidavit. Um, and then I even had the neighbor on the far side of the property, which it doesn't impact at all, but they also signed an affidavit, um, which is included in my zoning hearing packet, which is in the, uh, in administration, I guess.
I, I did wanna note that in the, uh, application, the zoning district that was shown was listed as FR. It's actually an R one zoning district.
Yeah, I, I, I had inquired about that and I think there was some confusion, so that's my apology.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanna make sure the board understood this is the R one. And secondly, uh, they asked for three different variances. The one that's listed for three seventy dash seventeen, that's, that's for the FR, so that's not even applicable here. So as, 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 uh, Mr. English had mentioned, the, uh, going from seven hundred and fifty to a thousand feet for the accessory structure is one of the variances. And the other one is just the side setbacks for the R one district. And it is extremely heavily wooded. I looked at the aerials and, and things like that, so there's, there's not a lot of room and and like the applicant had said, there's two existing sheds. He's gonna replace it with a thousand-foot shed. The watershed's not gonna change. He's replacing existing impervious with new impervious, so there's a, a strong likelihood there won't be even stormwater management required for this.
There's a, and I can, I can do the calculation, but there is actually very minor impervious being added just due to the existing shed structures. Uh, and then you, you brought something and I, my, it went out just as quick as it came in.
I see no reason to oppose this.
They'll have the right if they don't.
So that neighbor would have the right to oppose it if they don't want it at zoning hearing if he's, if he comes along and says, hey, we're fine with it.
Absolutely, and, and that was my first conversation after we had the survey done. My first conversation was with him before I even had the plans for the shop drafted. Uh, because if he said no, I, there was really no other option without very extensive excavation, which would just blow the budget that we had set aside for this project.
All right, I, from the consensus, it sounds like we will not take a position on this. Great. Okay, you'll, good luck with the zoning board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. My, oh, there. Thanks for being a good neighbor and talking to your neighbors. Just thank you for that.
Say it every single day. All right, have a good one. Okay, that was nice and simple. Thank you. And on to old business, uh, discussion of the preliminary twenty twenty five budget. Uh, Lori will go ahead and lead that.
Okay, so, um, the board voted on the preliminary budget at the November meeting. The budget was advertised in accordance with second-class township code on November twentieth, that which satisfies the twenty-day public notice period. Um, there have been, in that time, I've made very minor revisions to the budget. Um, second-class township code allows me to make adjustments so long as they are no more than ten percent in the aggregate and no more than twenty-five percent in any major category. That hasn't happened. Um, I made minor adjustments to some salaries as a result of personnel discussions that we've had. Um, and I made minor revisions to, uh, we got some additional insurance quotes in, so I adjusted accordingly. So at this point, um, the budget is, we'll be ready for final adoption when we reach that point on the agenda this evening. It will be done by resolution, unless the board has any questions.
Discussion on proposal for township solicitor.
Lori will. Again, all right. Um, so as we have discussed, so Bill, Bill Brennan has decided to leave us. Unless we tape him to his chair tonight, we could keep him. I mean, you just saw the new building. And have a nice new meeting room, but, um, so we had discussed several meetings ago, uh, how we wanted to handle, how the board wanted to handle the replacement, the replacement process. Um, and at that point, we discussed that an RFP is not required because it's a professional service. It is typically standard practice, but we were a little atypical in the situation because we've had um, conflict council appointed for many years that's been assisting us and has been involved in our, in our business, uh, for, uh, going back five years, yeah. Um, so at this point, the discussion will just be at this, what we've not, uh, the board did authorize the RFP if we chose to do it. I have not issued an RFP at this point. Um, it's my understanding that the intent is not to go forward with that process. They're lengthy. It will take a lot of time for us, for us to do that and based on all of the other work that the township has underway. But just to discuss and get everybody's thoughts, my recommendation would not to be to officially go out for the RFP and to appoint Mike Crati with Seattle Law at the reorg meeting.
I agree with that.
Yeah, it'll be a smooth transition if we bring on Mike, so it's nice, nice, simple, elegant solution.
Yeah.
Have we resolved the issues with his schedule?
We are gonna talk about that.
Well, yeah, but.
Two items from now.
We found a date.
Yes.
If that's what the question was, yeah.
I, I need at this point, based on our meeting calendar, I need like a red string on my wall to figure out how to map out when we're gonna meet.
Yeah, so.
But yeah, any comments, questions? Because we discussed doing the RFP previously, I just wanted to close the loop and have that discussion.
No, we're moving right on to new business right after that. I'll, uh, if there's nothing else on that, I'm just gonna move right on. Uh, let's see. I'll make a motion to approve extension of the MOU for Chief Fitzsimmons to the Board of Supervisors' annual reorg meeting on January sixth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That's just to cover the time period between New Year's and our reorg meeting. The MOU expires on the thirty-first of December and I imagine we will correct that in future MOU.
Please do.
Okay, I assume there's no opposition, uh, nothing. Great. All in favor? Thank you. We'll cover those six, uh, five days very carefully. So, discussion on the twenty twenty five meeting calendar. Right on to the conflicts for Mike Crati.
Yes. Okay, um, so unfortunately, Mike does have a conflict on our regularly scheduled business meeting night. Um, so we have been working to find alternate nights. My suggestion at this point would be, if everybody has availability, that we switch to the second Monday of each month for the business meeting, a Monday for the board meeting, yes, for the business meeting. And then we can discuss if you wanna leave the workshop on the same night. It is, the reason that we explored additional options for this is because moving the business meeting to the workshop night on the fourth Thursday of the month presents challenges for bill-paying purposes. We only cut checks once a month. Moving it to the last week of the month, I think, is gonna cause us significant accounting issues.
It sometimes puts it on the last day of the month.
Yeah, which if you remember, two years ago, when we moved the meeting night from the first Wednesday of the month, was because we had trouble getting financials done on the first of the month. We'll have similar issues on the last of the month because we'll be paying people either very late or very early, neither of which is good.
So my question is, you wanna move our business meeting to the second Monday of the month?
And move zoning hearing board, because I think that's where you're going.
The zoning hearing board is scheduled for that.
We will move zoning hearing board to our, to the second Wednesday of the month. We'll, we'll switch, basically.
And, and the zoning hearing board members are okay with that?
The zoning hearing board solicitor is okay with that?
Okay.
Lori, I'm confused because we have the meeting dates.
We didn't, because you didn't decide on that yet.
We, we haven't.
It reflects.
It'll be adjusted.
It will be adjusted. You're not voting on the actual, like.
We're not voting on the page.
Yeah.
Okay, but this was what we were presented to, like, look at our calendars and get, okay, so we're moving.
Uh, correct for all.
For everything except the business meeting.
For the business meeting, yeah.
The only challenge I have with it is, is I kind of book my trips and travel, but in advance, there's four Mondays. Four of those Mondays I'll have to join from afar remotely.
So what are these? So what are the dates for the Monday, for the Mondays? We have.
Now, the January meeting, we can discuss, um, whether or not you want to do that. We can do one or two things. We can make the business meeting January thirteenth, or we can combine the business meeting with the reorg meeting on January sixth.
We have done that.
We have done that in the past. The, the only reason last year we didn't do that was because it fell on.
A weird day.
It fell on the day, the day immediately after the, it was like the second of the month and that's not, that was not enough time for us to get the, the checks cut with the holiday. But, yeah, I would have no issue on this, by the sixth, we could have the, we would get the bank statements in time.
So do you need a decision about that?
Uh, I will need that in the next item, but I think, uh, let's start with, are we? If everyone's okay, we need to identify a new business meeting night. So let's start with that. The next item is scheduling the reorg. Um, and then we can handle the business meeting on that one.
It's fine with me. I have no problems either way.
Monday is good.
Um, I mean, I guess it's, I'm, I'm still trying to look at, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that we were looking at moving into Monday until right now. I mean, it sounds like that's what we have to do. Um, I just, it just generally Mondays are not great because people go away on the weekend, or are there any, are there no holidays or anything?
There are no holiday conflicts in, in twenty twenty five for the Monday.
I think it's fine. I'm just wanting to look at the.
Yeah, of course.
The Mondays are boring. I don't, I don't have anything.
Yeah, as we went through it, the only options really that we had was the second Monday or, um, making the working, the work session, the business meeting, which we can do. I'll just, it will take more work to figure out how to make sure that the bills are, are paid. But it can be done.
I'm sorry, what could be done?
To see if it could be done.
The fourth Thursday, the fourth Thursday, making the workshop meeting, the business meeting. We also then run into the challenge, we'd have to reschedule November and December, right?
Could pose a challenge every year. With, with it being.
We don't normally have workshops on those months, so that's never been an issue before, but.
Plus it will run to everybody's holiday calendar every year.
I don't see any, I don't see any conflicts. Um, the, the, October thirteenth is Columbus Day.
We, that's not a holiday for the admin staff.
Or Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah, on, yeah.
I don't have any conflicts.
I have a lot of conflicts, but I'll work through them. January, February, March, they're all booked to be away, but I can.
January, though, perhaps we won't, if we combine. Yeah, if we combine the business and the, and the, and the other ones, we can, yeah, we can always accommodate.
Combine for January and do the other stuff later.
Touch me down to missing only three and two questionables, we'll have to maybe change the travel plans.
If you need to, we can do, we can do Zoom.
John? John, you okay with that? Cool.
All right, so. And we will keep seven o'clock.
Vote on that?
We'll, we'll do it later. When we approve, when we approve it, we'll approve the meeting calendar with that, with that change. No, we, we have.
Oh, it's on the event tonight?
Yeah, I think so.
You will, um, correct at reorg.
Yeah, it's at reorg, sorry.
But tonight you will authorize advertisement of the.
Reorg meeting.
Reorg meeting, and then at reorg, you will vote on this.
And that's, yeah, that's, that's the rest of the calendar.
Lori, what, what we've done in the past is, are, we would have our reorg meeting.
And then.
And then. And then just say immediately following, we have our business meeting. We made the mistake one year of having like our reorg meeting at, I'm gonna make up times because I don't remember what it was. We said six o'clock, and then we said that our, um, business meeting was gonna be at, at seven.
And you sat here for forty-five minutes.
And we sat here for forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
So if we say it immediately following, that, that's when you advertise it, if you can put it that way.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we will combine the business meeting and the reorg meeting. So the business meeting for January will be January 6th. And then there will be no meeting on the 13th.
Great. Does the business, does the business meeting, meeting need to be wrapped in this motion?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, I do need you to.
I'll wrap it in.
Thank you, yes.
I'll celebrate here with anything.
Yes, with cakes.
Yes.
Maybe I'll bring you in a cake.
I'll, um, so after that discussion, I'll, I'll make a motion to advertise the 2025 Board of Supervisors Reorg Meeting and business, first business meeting in January for January 20, uh, 6th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise the 2025 Board of Auditors Reg Reorg Meeting for January 7th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Um, why does it have to be at 4:00 PM?
It doesn't have to be, but that is the time that it has always been here and that works for the auditors.
Okay. I'm only asking because I've always been asked to attend that meeting. And, um, it hasn't always been at four.
I don't know. Since I've been here, it's been at four o'clock. So I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
If you don't need me to be there, I don't care. I, I was only, always there before because I was a previous auditor.
I don't see any reason that you have to be there.
Okay, then that's fine.
Take the day.
Oh.
The Board of Auditors meeting here, as, as you well know, is a five-minute meeting where they include their minutes from last year. It's a formality for, for those new people. We appoint, we appoint a CPA to do our audit every year, but we are still required by second-class township code to have elected auditors. However, all of their job duties are replaced by the CPA.
Yeah. Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the 2024 library contribution in the amount of $8,600. This is a budgeted item and it represents the requested amount from the library for $1 per household. I believe they function on a, like a, what is it, a honorarium or something? They have a William Penn grant, that's what it is. Um, thank you. That's, that's why the number is lower than you might expect.
Second.
Alright, I'll make a motion. I, I did make that motion. You made a second. Great, thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This will now be January 6th, because we know when the business meeting is.
That's fine, thank you.
We just note.
We just note that this was what they asked for, right? This is not, they, they asked, we're giving them what they asked for.
That's why I brought it up, yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of the conditional use hearing on January 6th, 2025 at 7:00 PM for Phoenixville Area School District and Kreis Transportation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, I thought we were just putting ours on January 6th.
That will be at the business meeting.
There's a business meeting that night now.
So the, the conditional use hearing will happen at the business meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, just to let you guys know, I will, um, be abstaining from this because I work for Kreis.
Okay. The rest of you guys own, uh, any comments, questions? All in favor for the rest?
Alright.
Aye.
I wasn't sure if we caught that before, so thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Manager to close the ARP account with Pliget. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Do you want to comment on that, Lori, for briefly?
Yeah, we, I opened this account, um, I think it was earlier this year or sometime late last year with the intention of investing our ARP funds. In the midst of all of that, we started spending it on the municipal complex. So it didn't really make sense to put the money in there because we were writing consistent checks out of it. And subsequently, we have found out that we have to expend all of that money by the end of this month. So no money ever went into that account, but the board authorized me to open it. The board needs to authorize me to close it. But there was never any, there were never any funds in it.
Shut her down.
Great. Any questions, concerns, comments from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to authorize Township Manager to renew agreement with Cypress Landscape and Design Limited to provide municipal complex landscaping services for 2025 in the amount of $11,184 and 46 cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Can I ask a stupid question? If we go ahead with the, um, construction, are we gonna need this?
I would, uh, yes.
Okay.
They do all of our ex, exterior landscaping. So I would imagine we will still have land, we will still want green space and landscaping.
Okay.
If they will.
Is it something we normally go up to get quotes on?
It's under the threshold, so we don't have to.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Right on to resolutions and ordinances. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-23, adopting the 2025 Schuylkill Township Budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have already touched on this tonight. We've discussed it at length. Are there any questions or comments from anybody? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see. Uh, make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-24, annual tax levy for 2025. Um, there are no changes this year. I'll make, yeah. Any, uh, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-25, establishing the 2025 holiday dates. Do I have a second?
Second.
There are no changes to that schedule either from last year. Um, any comments? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-26, transfer of funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, this is the most, there is the resolution authorizing Lori to transfer funds at the end of the year, I think.
Yep, that's correct. And the dollar amounts that are included in the resolution are not to exceed amounts. Um, and that gives the flexibility because I, I don't know what the true amount of the surplus will be yet. So that gives me the flexibility to make an appropriate transfer.
Great. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-27, joint 904 recycling grant application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lori, would you like to expound upon that briefly?
Yeah, so this, uh, we make this application every year. Uh, this is the money that we get back for doing our recycling programs, our leaf collection, that sort of thing. Uh, our leaf yard, I'm sorry, I should say. This year, we work with Hough Associates every year. They've been great for us. They, they maximize our grant money that we receive. They handle all the paperwork for us. They make it super easy. This year, they approached us to see if we wanted to join forces with. Thank you. I always get it confused with East, West Whiteland. Uh, by doing a joint application, we can get a little more money, and it didn't require any additional work other than the passing of this resolution and me signing the, um, the agreement for us to do it that way.
Anything to get more money, I'm all for.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly. We have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Great. Two-minute report. Um, Board Liaisons, we'll start with John and work our way to me.
Alright, uh, so EAC had their last meeting of the year. Um, a couple of things to note. Uh, the textile event, uh, recycling event that happened in, uh, early November, over 2,000 pounds of textiles that collected, which is pretty wild. Um, thank you to everyone who showed up. Thank you to people who volunteered and stayed that weekend. Um, giving up your Saturday. I think it was Saturday. The tree giveaway for next year, there was discussion around naming it in honor of Fred Perry, who was a previous board member. I don't know him personally. Um, I don't know if anyone else here does, uh, but they are talking about that. Apparently he had a big influence on the EAC, involved in the EAC, so wanted to, or considering doing that for next year, doing that in his name. Um, and then, uh, they're gonna prepare a report for everything they did in 2024 and get it to us, us at some point in Q1. And that's it.
Alright, thank you. Um, Danielle?
I have nothing to report. Unfortunately, I had to travel for business last week and wasn't able to attend the Phoenixville Area Regional Planning Commission. And I, um, unfortunately neglected to get an alternate to attend, so I think that we may have been unrepresented at the meeting. My apologies.
Alright, Martha?
I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, I think so too.
We will be fine.
Um, I have nothing to report from the Historical Commission. Uh, that was probably a record-short meeting. It was less than 10 minutes long, so, um.
Oh.
Yeah, I know. It's been incredible. And I wanted to make in addition to what John said about the textile recycling event, we received a check, or will receive, have we gotten it yet?
We have not gotten it yet.
We will receive a check for $207.80 for what we collected, and we hope to do one in the spring.
How did you, um, since you were the architect of this, Martha, how do you feel about the participation? Was it some? And I didn't have anything to donate. Um, I have since gone through my children's closets and think that that was not true, that I do have things that I could have donated. Um, it's amazing how holes sprout in kids', um, socks overnight. But how do you, what do you, how do you feel about it?
I think this is great. I, we didn't advertise it that, um, for, for a long period of time. So I think it was what, less than a month? We did the advertising for that?
Yeah.
Um, and to get, you know, 2,000 pounds, um, I think it was great. I, and I, I think if we advertise it heavily, um, in, for next year in the spring, when everybody does their spring cleaning, I think we'll do even better. You know, I think it was, uh, I, I think this is a really good thing to do. I think it, it takes this weight out of our, um, our landfill, and, um, it's get, uh, it extends the life of, of things that, um, should be extended as opposed to ending up in a landfill.
I just want to thank, even though I wasn't there, I want to thank you and Lori because you did, you took that trip to New Jersey to visit the recycling center. It was a lot of work. I took my kids over Thanksgiving to, um, the Academy of Natural Sciences in Philadelphia. They had a whole, um, presentation about fast fashion. They bought a, and a, a temporary exhibit there about the impact of the fashion industry on, um, on the environment and on, you know, landfills, and so it was very timely, so thank you.
And I just want to put one more thing out there about textiles, um, and clothing. We only wear 20% of what we buy. It is absolutely true. It is a statistic. It is, it is a statistic that has been thrown around for as long as I have been in the fashion industry. We wear 20% of what we buy. It's disgusting.
You're gonna need one of those 80%.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's disgusting.
There's, there's a fringe jacket in Bob's closet that you should bring in.
It's, uh, it's, it's just.
Never know, it could come back.
So I'm, I'm hearing a themed event of we all dress up for a meeting in clothes that we should have donated to.
Oh, okay. I'm wearing them now.
I could live with just this.
Not a business meeting, one that's not recorded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cheers to that. Cheers to that.
That's a workshop meeting, fantastic. We've already.
I'm so sorry, that was more than two minutes and, and, you know, and I stole John's thunder there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I like that.
Compounding.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go with Bob.
Lots going on with the open space, as we all know. Uh, good progress there. And a good meeting, very productive with the fire company last night. Uh, very much appreciate everything you guys are doing. It's come a long way to, to, to be a, uh, I think a lot better communication with a lot better projections of where we're headed, so thank you. That's it.
Thanks, and I will second Bob on the fire department meetings. They are continuing apace. Uh, and I will note at the Planning Commission meeting, I think it was this past month that the Fitness Center folks came in on, um, Chris Evans Drive. They're gonna have a Fitness Center proposal at the end of the cul-de-sac there. So, fun times. That on our little X-Clave. I will, uh, pass it on to Lori.
Okay, um, just a couple quick, quick items. But, um, the Open Space Acquisition, so we'll be closing on Sedgley Farms later this month. Um, it's tentatively currently scheduled for next, next week. Um, so we will, we, everything has been going well, so by the end of, by the end of the year, we will be the proud, proud new owners of a.
That's a lot of detail.
Everybody knock on wood. Yes, we're on, we're on track. It's going, it's going well. The bond process went well. Um, we're, we're on track, so, um, at this point, we're, 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 we're looking good there. Um, just, uh, building schedule update. Uh, we'll be closed obviously for Christmas on the 25th. We are also closed on the 26th, and the township is going to have revised business, uh, building hours. It'll be Monday through Thursday, eight to five, so we'll post all of that. We'll put it on the website. And the staff are very appreciative of the board, giving them a flexible work arrangement, so. And last but not least, on my list of things, I mentioned it earlier, but it is Bill Brennan's last, last night with us, again, I'm last, I mean, I haven't proven to be very persuasive, I guess, yet, despite my trying to keep him. He hasn't changed his number, though.
You, you've forgotten the Velcro on the chair. That's what it is.
I was gonna go like duct tape, I thought, might be more effective, but. Um, but Bill has been Solicitor of the Township since 2008. Um, so that's a lot of time. I mean, for people who listen to what we talk about at these meetings, that's a lot of time for Bill to put up with.
I'm joking. I said, I'm here so often, it saved my marriage.
Well, you can still come in, you know where to find them, yeah. Um, but I, personally, for me, I just want to say thank you. It has been a joy working with you. You have made this job doable for me, so I, I really appreciate it. So from the board, we have a beautiful plaque to present you with.
Thank you.
As a small token.
Glad you got my closing argument, very brief.
You wanna touch that one button, yeah?
One last time.
Okay.
Yeah.
My very brief closing argument is, uh, is this. This is, uh, the last meeting as Township Solicitor. The end of it, I want to restate my appreciation for the privilege of working for Schuylkill Township for more than 16 years. There's a certain credibility that comes with, uh, being the Township Solicitor around the county, and I've really enjoyed it. For me, it's been a great run. Uh, you have a terrific staff here to work with. Lori, Kim, Paul, Valentina, Chief Fitzsimmons. It's a talented group. Uh, they're doing excellent work. You're in good hands with Mike Crotty. He's a terrific guy. He's well-known around the county. And, uh, we had a meeting the other day, and it'll be a smooth transition. I'm, I'm sure about it. There's one thing about the Wagner case we have to work out, but we'll, we'll take care of that. I, in leaving, uh, I was thinking about a way that I could preserve some presence here at the township. So, uh, I contacted Jocelyn, um, at Cypress Landscaping, who is your landscaper. And I told her I wanted to have a tree planted to demonstrate, um, my, uh, thanks for the privilege of being the Solicitor. So I made arrangements for the, uh, delivery and installation of a red bud tree of about six to eight feet, uh, one and a half inch caliper. Lori will figure out where to plant it, and it'll be watered and all that. So, uh, that'll take place in the springtime, and I just wanted to have something here, uh, so that I can drive by and remember my time here at Schuylkill Township. It's been wonderful. So thank you all very much, and, uh, I'm not going anywhere, but, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll see you around town, okay?
That was it for me.
Thanks, and thank you for your first and only two-minute update.
And that's, it's very, it's a very thoughtful contribution, um, in addition to all your other thoughtful contributions. And that's, it's very, it's a very thoughtful contribution, in addition to all your other thoughtful contributions, Bill.
I know I said it before, but I will say it again. Thank you for the dedicated service to the township. It's been a pleasure working with you for the better part of a decade at this point.
And Bill, enjoy your grandbabies.
Yeah.
They're the best. They're the best.
All right. Well, we will let Paul go ahead and give his two-minute updates.
Try to top that, Paul. There's your tree.
I gotta follow this. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. Yeah, so.
You better perfect your bow after the.
Yeah, courtesy. I don't know what to do. Just some minor updates. The sidewalk plan, we will be submitting to PennDOT the revised plans so that we'll be able to get some comments hopefully towards the end of January back. Additionally, right before Thanksgiving, I was working with Lori, Valentina, because Valley Forge Sewer Authority was going through another allocation. Their, their special report wasn't accepted by the P A D E P. So, so basically, they are now going through another rounds of design and things like that. They asked us to present the information that we have presented multiple times. I just had to regurgitate it in a different format, went through the numbers. Valley Forge Sewer Authority and their engineer were very helpful. They, they had meetings with Lori, Valentina and I because they were giving us a lot of information. We were just trying to figure out what we needed to do. There was no change in what the township has requested, has, has, has in the past. It was just, just another step that Valley Forge has to go through.
So the state didn't like what you gave to Sewer Authority?
No, Martha, the, the state, the Valley Forge Sewer Authority and their, and their engineer Booker took information from Schuylkill, Tridiferent, East Plaqueta, all, all the different townships and municipalities that were giving sewer. They bundled it together. They sent the.
So it's not just us. Okay.
And it's not, it's not an issue with, with Schuylkill Township. It was more of a rejection that they're like, no, this is, this is beyond a special study report. We want more.
Oh, okay.
And that, and that's what triggered going through all this.
I misunderstood you.
Yeah, no, no, no worries. And, and that's it.
Thank you. And we'll move to the lieutenant for comment on the police. Thanks. Yeah, that would be, that would be appreciated. Thanks.
First, I'd like to thank you all for giving the opportunity to be here in the capacity that I am. So thank you for that. Couple of quick updates on what's going on downstairs. The patrol car that we purchased earlier this year is just about finished. We were getting ready to take delivery of it. And then the equipment that we purchased for the e-ticketing system came in early. So they're outfitting, they just said, it's already here. We might as well just keep it. We'll put it in and try to get it to work. So they're trying to figure out the best place to keep that equipment in the vehicle. We had to make some last-minute changes. We moved some equipment from one car to another to kind of make it more suitable for the patrol function that it's going to serve. There was a pole that was hit on Route 23. I believe somebody contacted the township about it. We notified PICO. They came out and the night of the incident, somebody crashed into it about 2:30 in the morning and decided that they would let us know by leaving their car there and just driving away. Yes, we were able to find the driver. They are okay. They recited for the offense. But PICO came out and said, it's not our pole. And the guide wire is hanging down low. It's a Verizon pole. So we notified Verizon. We haven't heard anything back. So sometimes Verizon takes forever to deal with wires, poles, so on and so forth. So we're trying to stay on top of them to get out there and fix it before the thing snaps off the wires and lands on 23. We've had enough problems with stuff coming down on roads in the township. Last but not least, the Senate, Senate Bill 34 went into effect. It's called Paul Miller's Law. It's anti-distracted driving laws, basically saying that you're not allowed to use your cell phone while driving a vehicle at all. Yes, we're happy to see that one, too. The current law just covered texting. Now it covers everything. Everything has to be hands-free. However, in that law, they passed a section for what's called contact data reporting, meaning police departments that serve municipalities of more than 5,000 people are now going to be required to maintain a record of everybody that they come into contact with during a self-initiated traffic stop. Basically, race, gender, those things. I'm happy to report that we've been doing it since 2022, thanks to Chief Frye. So we already have the data needed to submit to PSP. It's just now it's going through a formal process where instead of just keeping it in-house so that we have it for our review, we have to send it out to meet that standard. So we have until December 5th of 2025 to do that. But like I said, we're already, we were already, we already had the data. Now we just need to figure out the best way to go back and extract that data from our RMS systems and send it off to the state.
Is that, so has that law been signed? Is it, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So when the law came out, it, it went into effect immediately, but we have a one-year grace period where we're not allowed to issue a citation for, if we happen to be see somebody texting on their phone, we have to give them a warning for a year. I believe that effective date goes into June. So we have from June of '24 to June of '25 to give warnings. Once we get to June of '25, then we can issue citations. But everything's signed, everything's ready to go. They're just giving us time to catch up on, for departments that weren't keeping records for this, they have to create a system or a form, basically, that needs to be filled out every time that you come into contact with somebody because of a motor vehicle stop.
So for cars that have like Apple CarPlay and integrate with the controls of the vehicle, you can touch the controls of the vehicle, you just, right?
Correct. Headsets, you can have.
I want to make sure I'm not breaking the law in my township.
Yeah, basically says, yeah, we don't want that either. It says hands-free. So even if you have the air, you know, I use the Air Bud sometimes because the CarPlay, sometimes it creates an echo effect. You just can't, we can't see anybody driving down the road with the cell phone tested there anymore.
You can't see this, or this, or this.
Texting was always on the books. It came, texting came out probably five or six years ago. It was just very difficult to enforce because of how it was written. This kind of, you know, Paul Miller was unfortunately killed in a motor vehicle accident because he was hit by a texting driver. So when the law came out, they named it after him, and now it's being pushed out statewide. But on the very bottom of the law, that's where it has this CDR statute that says you need to contact. You need to write down who you're contacting.
Okay. I got pulled over in Ohio a couple of months ago. I was looking at my GPS. I actually wear it on my hand on the steering wheel like that. And the cop let me go, but he said, you can't touch it at all out there. I'm like, it's GPS. He said, you got one over there. I'm thinking, yeah, but then I gotta look over there. This is easier. He said, sorry, it's the law. You can't.
Yeah, when they first came out with a lot of them, if the device that you were using was integrated into the car, it didn't count. So MDTs are integrated into the car. If you plug your cell phone in to your vehicle, it's now integrated into the vehicle. It was, like I said, it was a very difficult law to enforce. The only department I knew that had a lot of success with it were the Pennsylvania State Police, because they would stick troopers in a PennDOT dump truck. And as they were driving down a turnpike, the trooper would kind of look out the passenger window. And if you saw somebody texting, that's how they would pull people over for it. But this should give us a little bit more enforcement for local law enforcement, where we're not riding around in dump trucks looking at people texting and driving.
You ride around in the school bus. I see it all the time.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if the signal sidearm cameras were picking it up as people go past a school bus looking like this. So, but if someone, you know, it's something you might hear about, especially because, you know, the political climate right now and some of the interactions we've had between law enforcement and civilians. They just want to make sure that we're documenting everything that needs to be documented. And it is not subject to right to know.
Quick question on another. Did you have something else?
Um, when this actually goes into effect and you guys are, I, I know, I know it's law now, sort of. But you can't write a ticket on it. Is that correct? Is that how it works?
A ticket on, I don't understand. What do you mean?
Somebody's using their cell phone and you pull them over for it.
You can't ticket them now. Okay. When, when it does come into effect where you write somebody a ticket?
Yes.
Can you have our Facebook guy post something about it to let residents know?
Yes. Yeah. Cause yeah, nine, nine times out of 10, when you see these things.
You can just say, an incident occurred with this, but not a name. Is that how you do it?
I would assume it would just be a general, hey, tickets can now be written now.
Yeah.
Not someone got.
Oh, I don't.
Not public shaming.
No, 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 we're not public shaming.
Yes, we will do our best to make the public aware.
Residents that this is a new law now, and you can be ticketed for this. And even tell people, hey, your ticket's gonna cost a million dollars, or it's five points on your license, or whatever it is. I don't remember.
Usually for us, that's the best way to disseminate information, because if we, if we give somebody, if we pull somebody over and give them a warning, we let that person know, but it doesn't always get to everybody else. When they put the laws out, all the way down to the very bottom of the statute, they always put in there effective in X number of days. So this one just happened to say effective in 365 days. It gets sent to us because we're a police department, but it doesn't usually go out to the general public. And of course, you pull them over and they're like, sorry, I had no idea.
We knew about it because we're always updated.
Sure.
As bus drivers, new laws that are.
Yeah, well, probably 60 days before it goes out. You know, we could tell people, we could have told people in June of 2024, and by June of 2025, they would have completely forgot. So 60 days prior to it actually going into effect, you know, we'll, yeah, we'll put stuff out. We'll push it out on our Facebook page. I'm sure the, the state usually, you know, Schusterman usually puts stuff up like that, like, hey, this is coming. Be prepared.
Okay.
All right. On another note.
Yes, sir.
I noticed year-to-date last year versus this year, we're up about 20% in traffic accidents. And I'm looking down and I see that just last month, we have twice as many deer-related incidents from four to eight.
Yes.
And it's up, I don't know, about 70% from last year overall. Are those accidents related to deer? Is it, or is it just?
Not all. It, it's weird that it goes in spurts. We had a day last, last week, I believe, we had four accidents in a single shift. And it's, it happened sometime, and it wasn't just us, the whole county. It wasn't raining. It was a dry day. For some reason, that was the day everybody in this area picked something to crash into. Excuse me. One of the issues we did have was because we went 40-plus days without rain, as soon as we got a drizzle, everybody started sliding off a white horse road. So we had two accidents within 10 minutes of each other up on White Horse Road. We had somebody slide off and hit a tree on Valley Park Road. So the weather kind of played a part in that. But they were not all deer-related.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Good deal.
Share a compliment. So I, I think, like most of us, I don't consider myself a politician, a public servant, more a public servant. So we, I don't go out in my way to like meet with constituents. So I had 37, actually 40 of my neighbors over last night as a, for an HOA party that I hosted. So I felt like it was like open forum for the township supervisor. And we got to talking and people were asking all sorts of questions about the police department and everything. And a lot of people were really surprised that some townships don't have police departments.
Okay.
And uniformly, I got positive reviews about the police department and the fact that we, they are really happy that we have one. And so I just wanted to share that because maybe you don't get that many positive comments unsolicited. So, thank you.
I appreciate you telling me that very much. Yeah, we, we, we enjoy our residents. They're great. We love them. We see them in all kinds of walks of life. So the fact that that got to you and that got back to us. And not everybody's happy when we show up. But thank you.
Happy that you're there. It was, I was joking. I was like, okay, office hours are gonna steal for another 15 minutes. Then I'm not answering any more questions as the township supervisor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. You're good.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, one more question. To go back to the law you were discussing, you made a comment about it's not subject to RDK. Is that, were you referring to the demographic information that you're required to collect now? That you've been collecting, but you're required to? Okay.
Yeah, the point is there, you can, you have two choices. You can send it to the state police, or there's a professor, I believe from Ohio, who runs these programs. And they'll actually do analytics on the program. So somebody just can't come to us and say, we want to see your Act 18 CDRs. And we're not to turn that information over to them. The state's gonna process it. They're gonna look at things. Chief Fitzsimmons and I went to Hershey for a whole presentation on this. And essentially, I think the goal that some thought was that this could show you if police departments were being biased towards a certain race or not. But what they ultimately determined was it has absolutely no bearing on showing bias or not. Simply because you're, you know, for example, Schuylkill Township's demographics are about over 90% Caucasian. So when you look at our car stops, most of them are gonna involve Caucasian people. It doesn't mean that we're being biased towards them. It's just, it's a product of our demographic.
Right.
But the law came out and they still, the legislators still want to look at it. So we still have to provide it and it has to be analyzed by the state police or a third party.
Gotcha. Cool. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Additional business. I'm gonna invite the fire department if they want to, if you want to say anything, if there's any updates or events going on. I know. Every, every time.
And people like firefighters, firefighters too, but they, you know that. So.
We can never hear it enough.
We like your pancakes.
It's, it's a good time. Friday evening, 7:00 PM, our annual tree lighting. The big man himself will be showing up on a fire truck. And then he's gonna go around the township on Saturday, I believe, starting at noon-ish. You'll hear the sirens. You'll see the lights. We have a Facebook tracker, so when we're coming through your neighborhood, our goal is always to make sure that he gets to every street in the township. So go to our socials for that. Other than that, the burn ban is now over. It didn't matter that we had a burn ban.
On Monday, I think.
We still ran way too many brush fires and one house fire as a result of a brush fire. So. The, yeah, that's our.
And then we'll call, we'll call him in and we'll have him put it out.
But that's it for us. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, just five years working with you guys, the more I learn, the more I'm impressed with how much work you put in behind the scenes that I never knew about. So thank you again for everything you're doing.
We're just keep toeing the line. We're all about it. Thanks.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate your reports. I was, you know, looking over the materials this morning with my, my husband's in the kitchen. And you, I was remarking to him how, you don't even know some of the things that are happening in the township and the things that, the services that you provide, you know, the, you know, responding to overdoses and things like that. And, you know, it's, it's hidden. People aren't really aware of all the things you do.
And if there's any additional data that you want to see in those reports, let us know. I mean, that's, those are the things that I think you need to know and the things that you can use to hold us accountable. If you want to see something else, let us know. We can, we can slice the data any which way you want to see.
Okay. Thanks.
Great job, guys. Thanks.
Oh, please. Hey, you forgot the bow. I'm joking.
Do we have any workshop items we need to discuss? That's the item on the agenda.
I think we'll handle that. We'll do some planning at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
We can talk about that at the.
What is, what is, what is it?
No, I just think that two topics I'd like to see next year are sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalks.
We just talked about that.
People are sick of me talking about how much I want. That was something, again, my constituents mentioned. They thought that Phoenixville, one person thought Phoenixville was trying to put sidewalks into Phoenixville. I said, that is not Phoenixville. That's Schuylkill Township. Another person thought it was the county that was gonna put the sidewalks in. So I dispelled, dispelled those notions.
Oh, yeah.
And then the other topic would definitely be, what do we do with this amazing public space, open space that we are acquiring? Which again, half the people didn't know we were doing it, and the other half had different thoughts about what, what we should do it, do with it now that we have it. And other people thought other people were buying it, not, not us. So.
The rumor mill is amazing in this township.
Yes. And sheets, and people thought that we had stopped sheets, that sheets was still coming in. People were asking me about Wawa. It's, it was really, it was actually pretty wild.
Wow. Okay.
So it sounds like we need to have a workshop on disseminating information. Maybe. I'll think about it. But, yeah.
We will, we will have workshops. The first quarter of 2025, the workshops will be focused on both of those topics separately. But we, we discussed tentatively maybe March for the sidewalks based on, we have to make the resubmission to PennDOT that Paul mentioned. And we have some, a fair amount of administrative work that has to happen on that before I think it would be appropriate for us to have a public meeting and bring everyone together on that.
Yeah.
So we're targeting March.
Okay.
And yes, and uh-huh, we'll, we'll have the first of many public meetings on what we will do with our brand-new piece of real estate.
Once we own that, that does not mean that, you know, the public can.
That is correct.
They cannot just wander all over it.
So can we somehow get that information out?
Yes, and the property itself will be posted.
With signage. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
That, again, was another question I got a lot of. And I told people, I don't want to hear about you going on the property. And the police will be driving around on it. Whether that's true or not, it's true now. Go drive around on that property.
Yeah. For a couple of reasons. I mean, first of all, there will still be people living on the property. So we don't, we don't want to invade their, their privacy, even though we will be the new owners of, of the parcel. So it will, there will also be required a lot of planning that will go into it before we can officially open it up to the public for safety reasons and insurance reasons. So no, it does not become, just because the township owns it, does not mean it becomes public, publicly accessible property on day one.
I wanted to clarify this because I thought, I think this is true, is that when the use restrictions or the use limits for Valley Park were put into effect, that was through an ordinance specific to Valley, Valley Park, right? The, the usage that's permitted for that.
We put something in the ordinance book about regulations on parks.
We have a park ordinance.
Park ordinance.
But it's not uniformed, it's not for all of our parkland. Because don't we, don't we permit some?
So that's, so that won't be a parkland until it's been turned into one. And.
It's just township. But Pickering Preserve, for example, don't we permit some bow hunting on that?
No.
No.
There is a sign that says.
That's from a long time ago.
Yeah. That's from a long time ago? Is it still, is it still there? Is it still, is it still there?
If it's still there, it should be removed.
I think it's still there.
Yeah.
I'll check on that, but I was fairly certain that they were. Someone has, bow hunting has not been permitted on that property since I've been here.
It's been a while.
Someone brought it up, so maybe we should take a look at that and take it down.
Yeah, we had, we had little success with the intent of the bow hunting on the township properties, so we stopped offering township property for it.
Okay.
And the people that were. They were using the property. I'm just going to put it that way.
Oh, well, anyway. So any further announcements? I don't have any. Great.
Uh, no.
Public comment? To the mic, name, address, et cetera.
You've been very patient. Thank you.
Last but not least. Good evening. My name is Michael McKeever. I'm a senior engineer and project manager with BL Companies here this evening to present or discuss a project or proposed development located at 200 Kimberton Road. The parcel is actually in the borough of Phoenixville. However, this proposed site does have a small sliver at the west perimeter that encroaches into Schuylkill Township. Ultimately, I'm here to request a letter of no objection or a letter of no interest from the board. My office has been in contact with Ms. Kim Valio, if I'm saying that name correctly. Zoning officer per Kim's recommendation, she recommended that the project be presented here tonight to the board. Mr. Beddinger, you may be aware of the project already and I'm here to just kind of introduce the project to the board. I don't know if this is the proper forum for a formal vote on the letter of no objection or the letter of no interest. However, I'm here to answer questions, present the project, introduce it to the, to the board and ask that it's deferred to the Borough of Phoenixville for their review.
I just heard about this today, this afternoon, I think, around noon time. I didn't know anything about it and Paul has just heard about it a couple of days ago. And you're right, it's a small piece of property, but we didn't know anything about this whole thing from Phoenixville and we would have expected them to contact us and say, there's a property with a, a property with a, with a division line between Schuylkill Township and the borough that's under review for a car wash. Even though it's a small piece, we don't know the impact of that. So Paul, can you tell us?
Well, I can, I can actually, I can chime in on this because I, we, this question came to me earlier today and we did respond. It's not on the agenda tonight, so the board cannot, they can't consider it, they can't, they can't take a vote on it. No decision can be made on it. We received the submission on, on Friday. I understand that Kim was contacted earlier than that, but our engineer only saw this on Friday. So my preference and the instruction that I gave was that this be scheduled, that a meeting be scheduled between our engineer, the borough's engineer and the engineer representing the project. And then we go from there, but it will need to be scheduled for a future business meeting. Our agenda was already finalized.
Understood. Yeah, I'd just like to use the rest of the evening to answer any questions about the proposed development or give a quick introduction regarding the proposed development for those not aware.
The board hasn't seen the project yet.
We haven't seen it, so it'll be probably better for you to come back at a meeting where you're on the agenda so we have time to take a look at all the materials and then have a, you know, full discussion. That way we're prepared with questions so you don't waste time with handing us something that's brand new.
One thing I'm sure we'd like to see is where this, where is the stormwater going to go? Even though it's a small piece, is the stormwater going to run into Schuylkill Township and cause problems? We don't know anything about it, even though it's a small piece, we need a stormwater presentation that was given to Phoenixville, I would say at least.
Yeah, that's what I'm here to answer the questions on. If we want it deferred to the.
Well, we can't do it tonight.
Next month. That's understood, but.
I'm so, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry that they, they sent you and you sat here all night, but the board